Sanders vice leader. Yeah. He said. He turned this. She went. They. Mission. He just. He was. So. So. I'm saying. They said. Stay around. Well, that's. But it's next. How are you? It's good. I'm insane. I said that. You got. Yeah. It's my fantasy. We're the ones for people all these years. So. So. Which has embarrassing. I'll give you. Yeah. So you have to turn on and we have to turn off. You're a. Okay. So. Yes. Okay. See. Don't see how she says from. Or. So. Well. So. So. I think. So. Yes. What's the news today? So. So. Please. Play for fun, Ben. Yes. So. And Charlie. For the. That's now. Now. Who? Yeah. What? We don't. You are. Friends. Friends. Stay. Oh, he said. So. Yeah. This is. Okay. That was. Why? That's their wife. She did. She. Absolutely. She asked that you ever miss. She means expensive. Thanks. I said. It's. Didn't. So. What?
Hi, Christian.
Hey, Ron, how are you?
Oh, pretty good.
Thank you for sending this out virtually.
No, no problem.
I'm gonna try to change to my other device where I can see it all better, but if I can't, then I'm just gonna stay right here.
Okay.
Here we go. Here it goes.
I'll go walk in and make sure they can hear you.
Oh, great.
Yeah. That's the Pelé.
Family's home.
Okay, if you want to say something, Christian.
Yes, hi, this is Christian. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
I'm gonna. I'm on my phone. I'm gonna switch to my computer, but I'll be on.
Thank you. You're very. Hey, Ron. People about.
You're talking back.
Come on. I can't see.
I'm in Pelé.
She very. Yes. She never been. Who's standing? That parts jobs. Did you want to speak?
Can you all hear me okay? So, Ron, I just switched to another one. Can you all hear me?
It's your son. He's a. Much. Right. So. I'm Doug Barnes. The. If I do. If I. Yeah. Which is. I was pretty. Certainly. I have some. Oh. That's. You're. Same. He's present. But. There's. Not. Great. Bye for. She. It's there. So. This. Saturday. He don't. It goes. Some. I had. Really. Takes. Long. Just. They're all. They must have been. Too fat. But. He's. He's done. He's got a drink. For. More. He's. So. So. I was. And. Good. Started. Good afternoon, everyone. Doug Barnes, the unfair prospect. Welcome to City Hall. This is a special meeting, city council of the city of Prospect. We've got three items on the agenda that will be. Pressing, so I call the meeting room. Um. First item on the agenda is comments from citizens. And. Check sign up list. No one has signed up. Check for their guests. They're not here to speak. They're here to observe. Brian, your father, because we don't need here. Ron is here as part of the requirements for the. So we're delighted and you've got any questions, so this is all over. So. Next item on the agenda is my report. Make. As I mentioned, we got three items on the agenda for this. I'm asking the council to consider. And. Primary reasons to the higher than expected snow removal costs. Additional costs we incurred at the time of this year for cleanup, following the actual. Work. Point. Or. And even though that was in previous fiscal year, some of those expenses. And also any personal worries to evolve. First, we're considering.
Excuse me, Doug, really quick, you're kind of going in and out, and it's just a little bit hard. Maybe if the microphone is just a little bit closer.
Christian said.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I know that about these microphones. I apologize for that.
Yes.
I'm saying. First item on the agenda that we'll consider is an amended road aid budget that allocates an additional $60,000 to cover higher than. Higher snow removal cost than we expected. To. To cover some of the paving we did and some of the sidewalk. We had planned for most of those expenses to be covered by revenues set out in the budget for the general fund, but the cost exceeded our expectations. The amendment to the budget for the general fund that's presented is the second item on the agenda, reflects an increase in. Our property tax receipts have exceeded our budgeted revenues for that last item. Accordingly, the amended budget shows an additional $20,000 in revenue for property tax receipts. Second, the revenues recommended to reflect $60,000 we will be receiving from the road aid fund if that ordinance receives a first reading. By the council this evening and is ultimately be approved by the council. The expenditure report of the budget shows an $80,000 increase. In. Sure.
Okay, stop talking, right? Because I don't hear anything right now. I was hearing him okay, Ron. I was hearing him okay before. I mean, it wasn't perfect, but it was. I could hear. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
It was barbed. Couldn't understand. I couldn't understand.
Yeah, I can hear. Yeah, I could hear him speaking and or maybe we could do both.
That's all I got.
Yeah, that's good. I can hear you, Ron, really well.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's just a little fainter, but I can hear you. Yeah. Yeah, it's okay. Is Doug speaking now, though? I can't hear Doug.
What I was saying. It's not the microphones.
Yeah, I can hear who said it's not the microphones. I heard that.
That would be me.
Oh, that. Oh, Ron, I can hear Ron.
Do what? Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, that's beautiful. Very nice.
All right. This is confusing because there's a feedback in here. So the expenditure port expenditure portion of the budget shows an $80,000 increase in spending for public works. Even with the higher than expected expenditures, John Carter and I believe that it is likely that the city will again end this year with a surplus. The third item on the agenda relates to the current version of the budget workbook. John distributed that draft to the council, and the council will have an opportunity this evening to discuss the draft. Please note that the draft is just that, a draft. We do not have information from the PVA about revenues we can expect from real estate property taxes. We also do not know the insurance premiums we will be called upon to pay for health, property and liability insurance, and there are other expenditures that are not yet well-known. Finally, we do not have a report from the Department of Local Government, the Kentucky Department of Local Government, on its view of the increase in the cost of living. That will be important information for us in recommending upward adjustments in salaries for our police and other employees to account for inflation. Finally, unrelated to tonight's agenda, I'll mention that we had a very successful cleanup on US 42 on Saturday. Thanks to Ron and Gannon, who came in and assisted with that, also to our police officers who assisted in making sure that our volunteers were safe. I think we pretty much filled up the dumpster with material that we picked up along the highway. Ron's nodding yes. Um, upcoming events include Shakespeare in the Park. Uh, Shakespeare in the Park presents Macbeth at the John Evans Pavilion at Little Hunting Creek Park. That will be on Sunday, April 27th at 1:00 PM. Uh, Prospect Library used book sale is coming up May 16 and 17. The art exhibit in City Hall opened on March, I think it's March 23rd, and that will continue through May 16th. Everyone's welcome to come by and see that. So that concludes my report, and we'll move to new business unless there are any questions. Christian, do you have any questions for me?
No, no, I can hear well. Thank you for doing that.
Okay. So I'll leave that on. So the first, any other questions for me? Uh, the first item on new business is the request for a first reading of ordinance 650, series 2025. That's the ordinance amending the budget for municipal road aid fund and allocating $60,000 to be paid to the. To or transferred to the general fund. Is there a motion to give that ordinance, proposed ordinance, a first reading? Case that's moved, that motion was made by Councilman Evans and seconded by Councilman Clark. Is there discussion on on the whether we should have a first reading of ordinance 650? In the absence of discussion, we'll move forward with a vote. Don Gibson. John Evans. David Holmes. John Clark. And Sandra Leonard. Okay, that that.
And I say yes, too.
Oh, I'm sorry. Christian. Christian Furman votes yes. So that's approved by a vote of six zero. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is a first reading, a proposed first reading of ordinance 651. Oh, wait a minute, we need to have the first reading of ordinance 650. John Evans, could you read the read the title? Okay, thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the request for a first reading of ordinance 651, and that's the ordinance that I discussed that would amend the budget for the general fund of the city of Prospect. Is there a motion to give that ordinance a first reading? John Clark made the motion. Is there a second? Don Gibson seconded the motion. Is there discussion? Any questions or any comments? If not, we'll we'll move to a vote. Sandra Leonard. John Clark, David Holmes, John Evans, Don Gibson and Christian Furman.
Yes.
Okay, so that's approved by a vote of six zero also. So the next item on the agenda. Oh, yeah, John, if you'll read that. Thank you, David. Okay, thank you. So the next item of the agenda, as I mentioned in my report, John Carter sent out the draft of the workbook that we're still working on. Uh, for the budget for the upcoming fiscal year that begins July 1, 2025. So that has been distributed, was distributed several days ago with the materials for this meeting. And and I'm glad to entertain any questions, or we can discuss that to the extent anybody wants to raise questions now. What we anticipate is that will be, we've discussed before the scheduling of the May meeting. And the thought that we've moved that meeting to the following week would actually then become a special meeting. It would be the day after Memorial Day. And at that time, the council would have received a much more, well, hopefully much more developed workbook for consideration of the budget. But if there's any questions this evening, we're glad to entertain those and discuss them. Yes, sir.
Under the revenue appropriations, insurance premiums, that's. 3526 is 1,615,000. I recall in the 2024. Insurance premium. Are we not using that number?
We may use that number. I'm waiting. I want to see. I should have a fix on the receipts for this year. Um, by. Let's see, they're due April 30th. So by the time we do our next budget meeting, I'll have a pretty fixed number. Correct. Yeah, I just took last year's number, but I think it is going to be higher.
Yeah, I think that sort of underscores this is still very much a work in progress, but we appreciate you pointing that out. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, this is Christian. Okay.
Being. The very last item is parks programs. This shows $1,500. Hopefully in that.
Okay, so. That particular line typically funds those kids programs. This isn't park programs as in. Concerts and all that. The concert line is under. It's 20,000. Let's see. We'll find that on. It is on page six, under community development. And it's $20,000. Eighty-one eleven. Eighty-one twelve is really strictly Fourth of July. Last year it did include a little bit for the birthday party, but. Ordinarily, it's all fourth. Well, it has. Shakespeare in the Park, but it's mainly it's it's really designed for all the pavilion. Correct. Although I will tell you, there's a couple of invoices. That we did pay out of the parks programs.
And this is Christian. I can't hear everybody, but is this, can you all hear me?
Hold on just a sec.
Hold on just a sec.
Go ahead and repeat your question.
Repeat your question, Christian.
Okay, so my question is on page 14. It talks about solid waste. Um, the number line item seven, six, one, one, garbage and recycling collection. And I just know that when I was out campaigning and talking to people, a lot of people were really asking if they could go back to having, you know, recycling every week and. You know, continue with garbage every week. Some people wanted it twice a week, so. I wasn't involved in all that when that decision was made, but is that? What is? Is it really cost prohibitive to go back to recycling every week or no?
We're saving. We're saving $200,000 a year. So so the history on this is that our, we were spending about 750,000. Can you hear me, Christian?
Yes, yes, I can hear.
Okay, so we were spending about $750,000 a year for trash pickup twice a week and for backdoor pickup of recycling once a week. And when when we got our new bid from Rumkey, the only bid we received was from Rumkey. It was our incumbent trash provider, trash removal provider. So when they bid bid for the current four years that we're in now, we're in the second of the four years. The bid was 1,200,000 instead of 750,000. So we had to find a way to. Save 450,000. The way the way that the council decided part of this, and I decided part of it. Uh, is that we went to once a week trash pickup instead of twice a week trash pickup. That saved us 250,000. And by going to once every two week recycle pickup, we saved another 200,000. And that's at the curb instead of at the back door. So it's just a question of how we how we spend our money. If if our if our citizens come to City Hall and tell us that they want us to spend the money and and generate the revenues we need to fund that, we'll we'll consider it. But but the other thing I'll mention, Christian, and you can tell anybody that's got a question about this, that they can address it to me. The council can allocate the funds, the council, and the council did allocate the funds to continue once a week recycle pickup at the back door. But I declined to spend that money. So what what I'm what I understand is the council can allocate funds. The example being the council could allocate funds for a police car, but but then I don't have to buy the police car. So if the council were to allocate 200 more thousand dollars a year for going back to recycle pickup at the back door once a week, I probably wouldn't spend that money. But I would listen to any citizen who has that concern and certainly respect that position.
And so 2425, it was listed as eight, six, six, 700, and 2526 was 715. But it would have been, what did you say, 1 million? Is that what you said it was the bid?
A million 200,000. The eight, six, six number included a bunch of tornado expenses as well.
Oh, that's true.
Actually exceeded more than just a solid waste contract.
We spent about. We spent about two hundred thousand dollars picking up toward tornado, more than well over two hundred thousand dollars, I believe it was, picking up tornado debris.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
About seven fifty, I think, but I may be wrong, Sandra. It's in that neighborhood. Do you know, John? Well, then that's probably right. I I said seven fifty from memory, so I wasn't relying on the budget when I said that.
Also fair to say that if the citizens and council decided that we wanted to change it and increase it, there's no guarantee that we can go back to the amount that they told us two years ago. They were like the per. It's likely that it would be.
It could well be. So the the agreement we have with Rumkey is four year agreement, and they're projecting on the front end, their best guess is how much they're gonna need. They lost money. They lost money the last year and a half of their previous four year contract on the on the contract in Prospect. And that was because that's when we were going through COVID and the increase in labor costs, labor shortage, insurance costs going up, inflation generally. So they they were careful to make sure they had enough money in their bid to cover their expenses and make a profit.
And is it?
And I'll say again, I've found Rumkey to be a very professional operation. I've got a lot of confidence in them. That I think they exercise good judgment and they're people of real integrity. Any other question about the budget? Anything else, Christian?
Only thing else I was gonna say, yeah, I've loved Rumkey, but does it, how does it work? Do we actually try to get bids from other places that do a good job too or no?
We do. We solicit, we advertise for bids. We advertise for bids and it happened that we only received one bid, and I think my belief is that all the problems Rumkey was having, holding employees, the other companies were having as well, so the other companies weren't interested in taking on more business since they were probably having a hard time meeting their existing commitments. That's that's my surmise.
Right. Well, maybe it's worth it like in a couple of years when the contract runs out to get, I'm sure that's what we do, right? We get bids again and then we can just see what they all are and decide.
We would love to have multiple bids to fuse from.
About a few years ago, and I for business. And one was from and Rumkey was fifty thousand a year higher place management. And the council, I believe unanimously, voted to go with Rumkey, tells herself.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments or discussion? So we commented earlier that we've got a new sound system on the way and this this evening's meeting is yet one more indication that we made a good decision.
I'm sorry, you all. I can't be there. There's just no way I could get downtown, from downtown to there by five.
I was just saying the Capital Project Fund is where the funding for the new sound system comes. I am planning to alter this document to include the Capital Project Fund because now it shows up on your monthly your financial statements. It shows up as a line there, so I haven't worked that into this yet, but that's what I plan to do when we finally go to pass it. Yes, well, um. So Sandra asked if we had to pass this anyway, just to balance the budget. To include it to balance the budget. Not as far as not necessarily, because it was a whole, it was created as a wholly separate budget from the general fund. Income is funded per ordinance is three percent of projected revenue. And it can be, it can be drawn from current funds or surplus. Follow your question correctly. It's it's a always separate budget. There is a line out of here, yes. Yeah, we did. We haven't included in the workbook, but I think it needs to go in there. It'll make more sense.
Hey, is there further discussion or questions? I think this is a good good discussion to get us started in the process because we're we're still somewhat early in the process of putting the budget together. So if there's no further business.
I'll just say to any council members that actually look through the document, if you got questions or, you know, issues, call me.
And and I want to stress what I've said before. Some even some of the salary numbers that are here are way tentative, so there's there's probably going to be an in an increase in the police department on some of the salary lines. From there's a three percent, there's an assumed three percent increase, which is about where inflation is. But but I expect that the, you know, we've got a new assistant chief, we probably need to adjust his salary up a little bit. And we're looking at some other changes for our part time office.
And the Fed leaves the 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 facial numbers two point five.
I forgot that he said that, so the the yeah. Okay, any further discussion this evening? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? And there's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye. You're adjourned. Thank you, Christian.
Thank you all. Have a good night. Take care.
Christian says everyone have a good night. Thanks for working with us through the problems.
Yes, no, it worked out. Thank you, Ron, and everybody for making it work. Bye.
And hopefully by June, we'll have a much better system to work with.
That's right. That'll be great.
It was different.
Yeah, but we made it. With chewing gum and duct tape and I got a Russian.